Okay.
Okay, evening everybody. Welcome, thanks for coming. Coming in for the role. We have put Maria Rice, District Director, present.
Okay, I'm ready to do roll call. Brian Knoyer.
Here.
Bruce Quinn. Amy Hemminger. Timothy Rogers.
Here.
Julie Trusco is excused.
Excused.
Okay. I guess. Steve Greenfield.
Excused.
I'm here.
Right, Nick? I can't, I went out of order, it's all my fault.
Okay, everybody stands in place.
United States of America, we are a republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, so liberty and justice in all.
Okay, I also want to thank our excellent tour guides and any of the personnel here, they did a great job. Before we start this presentation, I just want to turn it over to Dr. Raisenfeld, so that he can say a few words.
Yeah, again, I just want to thank our tour guides and Mrs. Metzger, who put that whole piece together, those kids all volunteered to be out late and take everybody on a tour. They were a little bit nervous at the beginning of, you know, not knowing whatever questions could come up. Chatted a couple of the groups, which were pretty well behaved. They did a great job, so I feel very proud of them. As far as the middle school goes, I'll just kind of make it brief. There's a couple of places in our middle school that are absolutely in desperate need of help. The place you're sitting in right now, which looks like a reasonable space, is the place that our chorus rehearses. You could not pick a less appropriate acoustical situation than this room for chorus to rehearse in. There are so many kids in our chorus, they fill all of the blue seats on the right side, and about a third of the blue seats on the left side. It's huge, and it's an inappropriate space. The other piece is, this is also right above our furnace. So, starting about seven rows, six rows back from the, from the top down, where the heat's on, and the heat's not on in the building yet, that area is excessively hot. Often in the wintertime, we have this door wide open, these doors, and the outside doors, so that we get a breeze through here, otherwise we wouldn't be able to have kids in the space. You've all hopefully seen the band room upstairs, also another room that's just in the wrong place. So, if you look at the band room, there's windows in the band room, those windows face the seventh and eighth grade wing of the building. So, when it gets warm out, April, May, band room windows are open because that room is hot, seventh and eighth grade windows are open. It's impossible, not impossible, incredibly complicated to teach while the band is playing in your classroom. The sixth, the sixth grade wing is anywhere the band room is. So, those rooms are literally across the hall or attached to them. So, band needs either once or twice a day, depending on which grade band it is, but every period there are lessons in there. It's excessive, also in the wrong place. Our nurses office has a problem in that anyone who comes in, there's no privacy, it's just one small room. So, if you're lying down in the small little bed, anybody who comes in with any other problems also sees you. Not a great plan. Our gym, if you saw, has a leak in the ceiling, they have tubing up, that leaks, the floor buckles, that's pretty much a regular occurrence for us. Hopefully, so the buckled floor upstairs in the eighth grade wing. Last piece, well, there's two pieces. So, our science rooms, two of our three seventh and eighth grade science rooms, two of the three are perfect. One of the three, so the two that are perfect have lab areas and desks, that's what it's supposed to be. So, when you're doing lab work, you have chemicals and things set up on the lab desks, and when you go back to your regular desk, that's where you do your writing. One of the rooms only has lab desks, that's a serious problem, and that really cuts back on what the teacher can do, because you can't do the writing with a lab setup, so. And last piece, last two, Home and Careers used to be split up into, was 26 kids in Home and Careers and in Technology, 13 in Home and Careers, 13 in Technology. Halfway through, they would switch. Now, we have over 30 kids in Home and Careers, just that room. Was never meant for that kind of space, it's just too tight, so that, that's unlimited of what they can do. And my last piece is, if you saw Room 45, up in the eighth grade wing, that's the room with the buckled floor, as many of them have upstairs. That's right off of the rubber roofing, as, as part of the roof right above us here. When it gets hot outside, that black rubber roof absorbs heat, and then that heat just lingers into those classrooms. So, most of the time, they have to close their windows because that heat is over 100 degrees. Many of those rooms, May and June are over 100 degrees, and on multiple occasions, Maria had to close that whole part off, it was unhavering. So, the middle school needs a lot of work, so I'm glad you're here, and you'll see the whole presentation about the middle school.
Dr. Raisenfeld, I just wanted you to elaborate on one other thing, because I thought you did a nice job in our group, sharing with us, that this was originally a K through 12 building, and it's been added to in piecemeal over the years. And I think a lot of folks in this community wrongfully believe that this is a sick or crumbling building. This is a building that needs to be re-optimized, it needs some repairs, it has doors, windows, floors that have outlived their, their lifespan. So, could you comment a little bit on the overall health, the structural integrity of this building?
Well, I'm not sure structural integrity of the buildings is my area of expertise, I'm going to turn that over to Steve, or whoever's going to handle that part. But I will say this, on a pretty regular basis, we end up with a leak in a reading room, and maintenance eventually fixes it, but during that time, the reading room was closed. But we had an issue last year, two years ago, with the stairwell of the seventh grade. We had a giant leak that ran down the wall and blistered all the plaster, that was a problem. So, it literally is, we had the roof issue a couple of years ago, so it literally is one thing after another. And I think the teachers have actually done an amazing job in holding together what they do, but I think at some point, you gotta fix what you gotta fix. I don't know if that's what you had in mind. Why not? Was that close?
Um, no.
Yeah, why didn't you speak to it?
Yeah, my concern is that, that I've heard from some potential detractors, that they're concerned that we're throwing money at a building that's failing. And from my understanding of the work that we've done, the, the analysis that the consultants have performed is that this is very much a structurally sound building that needs to be updated and optimized. We're not putting a Band-Aid on, on a decrepit building that's, that's going to need another Band-Aid in the very near term. That's, that's the difference between this project and a different project.
Let me give it another shot. That is absolutely true. I don't think this is a situation, again, it's not my particular area of expertise, but from what I've met with, with Maria and everybody else, I, the things that can be fixed, absolutely can be fixed. And in some cases, it's just a matter of changing some of the spaces, change out this space for this space, move this, do this, tighten this piece up. So, it's not a matter of that, my opinion, that we're just fixing something that's not fixable, we'll have to do it again. Looks like the plans that they have at this point, if you do it right, I think will get us back into the game, you know, and put us, you know, technically in a good spot.
Thank you, Dr. Raisenfeld. Okay, so, we're now going to move on to the tap of practice presentation, which is going to be...
It's going to be me.
...given an area by P. Nestamol, give the floor, somebody.
Can somebody be my tech person? First of all, welcome everyone. Thanks for coming out. Tonight, what we're going to do is just a quick presentation on essentially what went into developing the plan, we're going to hear about tonight, and then what the plan is, and then really open this up to your questions. Really what we'd want to hear from the community, what the concerns are, what the questions are. We as a group here, will try to answer anything you have tonight. So, what we'll do is, if you just hold your questions till the end, I'll try to go through this rather quickly. Many who may have heard this already, so I'll try to make it a little different, not bore you, but I will do it again, and I'll try to do it again on 20 seconds, I think it's coming up in a little time. Once we get started here.
Will they be able to see the screen? Can you all see the screen?
Typically, we would have brought the screen up on the stage like we did at the high school, unfortunately, that doesn't work. It's this mirror, am I right, Barbara? And it's not, it's obsolete.
Just so the whole community is also aware of this presentation, we're talking to this, is up on the website. So, for those that aren't able to hear it tonight, or missed something, but they'd like to hear again, you can listen to me do this again if you really want to, on the website. I think it's good. So, starting off with the first. So, first of all, we have a referendum that's coming to the voters, that will come out on October 28th. Just so you're aware, that's at the high school, two and 12 and nine, and we hope you come out to vote. Give you a little bit of history before we get into the actual project, and what went into developing it. First of all, the board as a whole, when we got together nearly about two years ago, we determined, one thing that this district didn't have was an overall facilities plan, a true master plan. A plan that didn't just look at a five-year evaluation of buildings, and try to come up with which were the highest priorities, and try to deal with them at a time. The board looking at the facilities as a whole, from the standpoint of a long-term assessment of them, and their utilization over the long term, nine to long term, a 20-year evaluation. So, through that, we came up, the original idea was, we hired an consultant to work with us, a consultant who had many years' experience in dealing with public school projects, and to look at helping us to develop a master plan. We did that, and we originally came up with three, three scenarios that we wanted to include that. One was essentially the four-campus option that we have today. Second would be consolidation option, but get it down to three campuses, and then the last one was a two-campus option. Through that, they were to cost out, from a 20-year perspective, again, what operational savings we might be able to have if we were to look at 20 years. We were to look at essentially if we were to sell those properties that we would maybe available, if we were to consolidate, what we might be able to recoup from them, and hence offset some of the costs with regards to those projects and building new. And, and look at that, and consolidate it again over a 20-year evaluation. So, what you can see up there, and probably can't see, and I apologize for that, is the cost of the different options. It ended up, we ended two more. Option A, what you see up there is what I would call the Band-Aid option. It's an option that really just looks at infrastructure for today, bringing things to code standards, but not based on today's code standards in many of the periods, but just code standards of the 1930s wing, or the 1950s wing. So, we're never really bringing things back to where they should be based on today, and that, that, to me, is just to give us kind of a baseline, or a rough estimate of worst-case scenario. So, that's option N. Option B was again the four-campus option, which says 62.7. Option C, the three-campus, that was the one where we would essentially close this middle school, and build a brand-new middle school at the high school site. Option B was the two-campus option, would be to close Usine, and to basically expand Lenape, and make Sinai School, if you want to call it that, and have the Intuit Tire Elementary at that one site. So, Lenape and the middle school and high school on those sites, so the two-campus option. And then Option E came up at the end, where we said, well, what about looking at consolidating Usine and Lenape, but leaving the middle school here, and, and the high school where it is? So, that's what Option A is. What you can see is the cost of all those options, the capital costs associated with them, and then Rick did some calculations there with regards to what the tax levy would be for each one of them. But that tax levy builds in things like estimates of retirement debt, again, offsets for selling properties, and operational savings. What the board then did, after all that review, is we said, okay, let's now, we, we, you know, broken it down the most cost-effective. We also built in one other component, we just didn't look at this from a financial perspective, we looked at it from an educational perspective. So, what we did was, we said, okay, what matters here are our clients, who are our clients? Our clients in this project are students, and we asked for the administrators to go back and look at what education needs they think they needed for today, but also for 20 years out. Very hard to estimate, but at least give us an idea of what their immediate needs are. From that, they, we kind of linked the educational master plan, with this facilities master plan, and tried to develop what we thought was the best scenario for the school district. Out of that, what we found was, any of the options would work for our administrators. The biggest things that they felt were, they needed these fixes made, whether it's a four-campus, three-campus, or two-campus option, it really wasn't that important to them. So, it really came back down to the taxpayer, and the costs associated with the project. What you see up there is the option being the four-campus option, was by far the least expensive of the options available to us, and that's why we started with that. We took it a step further, we then said, okay, is it 62.7 million? And by the way, this is a lot longer than what you'll see online, but I wanted to really go through this for you guys. 62.7, obviously, we have referendum that's coming up with 52.9, I'll get to that in a minute. The difference is that we took it a step further, and we said, okay, administration, you go back, and we as the Board of Education will go back, and we look through all these improvements, and we'll say, what are the top priority infrastructure improvements? And what are the top priority educational improvements? And those are the ones we want to pair this project down to, because the taxpayers can't really handle too much of a burden. That's where you'll see over there, which you won't see, that's four-campus option phase one, what priority ones must have. That's when we came up with the 54.9 million dollar number. The board then had another meeting, and again, as we do, we pared it down a little bit further, and I believe that was the 50, where is it? 52.5?
52.9.
52.5? Is that right? Yeah, and that was decided on March 26th. Now, what we did was to make sure everything was correct before we brought it to the voters, is we brought in Flongo Group, who's a construction manager, very reputable, done many, many public school projects in New York State, and we asked them to do another bottom-up assessment, and recost exactly what we had determined was going to be our option three, phase one project, with all the things we took out. That's where we came back with the 52.9 million, to make sure that what we brought to you, the community, was the correct number for the improvements to be made. And that's where we got that, I think that's enough on that, but you can ask more questions as we go along. Next one, please. So, again, that's when we came up with the four-campus plan. It wasn't based on any politics, it wasn't based on anything at all, solely followed from a top, top-up assessment, what was the best in, in the interest of the community from the cost perspective, and for the education of our children moving into the future. So, that's the basis of it. All right, I was typically handed off the mic, the mic said, I'll go with it, so I'm going with it. So, high-quality infrastructure, you guys have walked through the middle school, you got that luxury tonight, if you want to call it that, we've seen the disrepair of the school, unfortunately. Updates in infrastructure, you're sitting in the one, the band room, or excuse me, the chorus room, where we have issues with sound quality, and it's just impossible with the acoustics in here where the teacher, you know, a chorus. Need improved learning spaces, I'm not sure if that, does that mean, Home and Careers? Oh, that's, that's, okay, that's high school. Well, we have issues with overcrowded spaces in the high school also. It's not just an issue here at the middle school, the high school is also overcrowded. In fact, you'll see, if you go through the listing of projects, there's an addition, I believe, of five classrooms to the high school to offset some of those. And there's ADA compliance, you guys went out, you saw the ramps, really, the children can't get to certain spaces, they break their legs, they're kind of out of luck, and that's not fair to the students. Upgrades planned, again, we've talked about this already, undersized classrooms, classrooms in disrepair, essentially, this would, this project would take care of that. Again, all infrastructure, all infrastructure needs would be taken care of in this particular project. This is not a Band-Aid project. This is a project to bring our facility up to current codes and standards on every single one of the four buildings. You need to understand that, that's a big deal. We're not just doing a Band-Aid repair that we're going to redo again in five years, or two years, and go back to you and say, oh, let's redo it. And I'll explain a little bit more about that as we go along. Again, need more space, I'm not that hard on this stuff, you know. Music programs, we just talked about it, we can go on, ADA, we just talked about that, you've seen it. Obviously, lots of infrastructure, most of these pictures are from the middle school. I believe that's the high school parking lot, in the corner, is that true? Whatever, we've got, we've got infrastructure, we've got parking lot issues.
High school patio.
High school patio? Oh, okay. Roofs, you saw those tonight? Going on? District-wide storage, every single one of our buildings, equipment is stored in various locations, outdoor middle floors, creates problems with learning spaces, it creates problems with many things. Storage will be added to all the facilities through this program. You probably heard tonight from the students that there is a need for technology, not computers, not stuff. There's, there's the need for essentially the, the network to be upgraded, so that when technology does come in, we have the ability to put technology in place. Right now, we're so limited in the infrastructure to have the technology, that we can't even have it today. So, much of the, you know, the technological learning that should be done with the students, we really can't do, because we don't have the infrastructure to do it. And more, I'm not very into. This stuff is all published out on these various, out on our website, there's a listing of it out there, and a handout that you guys should take, it's in there, yellow. It really shows everything in the plan for all four of the buildings. Efficiency and sustainability, this is important to the community, we understand, it's also very important to this board. And for, every project, when we get into detailed design, will be looked at from the perspective of sustainability, will be looked at from the perspective of efficiencies, energy efficiencies, to maximize essentially, and reduce costs moving forward, and make this as green with the buildings as we can moving into the future. All right, listen. All right, cost. First of all, the cost cannot exceed 52.9 million. That's what we're coming to the voters, to you guys, to ask for your approval, to see essentially, that's what are not to exceed, to do, all four buildings. Again, that includes all infrastructure, and includes educational improvements, are top priorities. One big item to understand is that there is state aid associated with the capital project, this would be obviously a capital project. We're using a conservative number here, 50%, our, our number for state aid is 60% for renovation, but new construction is aidable at a lower percentage. So, in order to be conservative in our estimates for you, we wanted to use a 50% liability, okay? And by the way, as, as kind of a point, tomorrow night, from four to six, there will be a financial piece to this, for anyone that's interested to come out and learn how exactly this project, where these numbers came from, and how the cost structure of it, and how the liability works and all that. There will be, from four to six tomorrow, there will be a seminar, if you want to call it that, workshop on that, so if you can make it, please come out.
Where is that?
That is going to be at the district office, at the conference room.
Okay, in the line up.
In the line up. Do we know that? Okay. All right, so, getting, continuing on, there's 50% reimbursement, okay, on the project. So, the actual project to you, the taxpayer, would be half of that, 52.9 million. There's also something called debt, on our books, we have debt from other projects we've had along the way. What we have the benefit of happening now is what's called retiring debt, that debt's going away, we're paid off, we're paying off some of those projects. The benefit here is that we're going to have offsets, so as this project gets phased in, you're going to have an offset of the retiring debt going away, so that the cost won't be 100% burden to the taxpayer because of that retiring debt. There is a piece of this that, you as a taxpayer, also need to be concerned with, from the perspective that this project doesn't happen. Because what happens is, there's what's called the tax cap, and that's what our operational budget is based on. The tax cap is a calculation that also includes debt. And what happens, if we have no debt on our books, it actually has a negative effect on our tax cap, which means it actually reduces our tax capability, and reduces our ability to levy taxes. Great for you, but not really, because what happens is, if we reduce our revenue from the taxpayer, that can only come from one place, and that will come out of the program. So, there is some importance to maintaining some kind of debt on the books, so we can maintain our tax back at a reasonable level. Low-interest rate environment, we've, I think, all heard, if you've ever refinanced your home, you've heard that we're kind of in a low-interest environment, we've heard so many times now, that we're at the lowest interest rate that we've seen in history. I think we, we as a school district can take advantage of that as well. In the estimates that are done here, we use a three-and-a-half percent interest rate for the bond that we would use. That's probably a very conservative estimate, but again, one, be conservative with our numbers, and not go the other way, and as we've done 20 of them. What is the actual impact to the taxpayer, and that's the important piece here, the actual impact to your pocketbook? The actual impact would be a $20 cost increase for every $100,000 assessed value of your property. So, very simple calculation, if you take your, your assessed value, we slid back the tax bill, so you should see it there, divide that by $100,000. Take that number, multiply by 20, that will be the, the dollar amounts, $300,000 assessed value of your property, it will be a $60 increase in your taxes, one-time escalation, and that $60 would be maintained for the 20-year duration of the bond. It's kind of simplistic, there's no, we tried to make this as simple as possible, so it was easy to understand, so you can understand the magnitude of how this would impact your, your taxpayer. Why now? I, again, there's a little timeline, we've needed this project for a very long, long time. I'm sure most, everyone knows, we've heard about it, we've had, unfortunately, a number of failed referendos to get a capital project completed. You can see the timeline there. The big thing here that's different, you know, some people may be saying, what's different? The difference is, we have a plan. We actually have a facilities master plan, something we've never had as a community, and that's a big thing. It actually is something that we can now rely on, to say, this is the improvement we're doing, and any improvements we do in the future will be based on that same facilities master plan for the next 20 years. We're not going to go in and do a repair to a building, do an upgrade to a building, and in five years down the road, go in and reassess and change it. So, we've wasted taxpayer money. The plan is to maintain and follow the plan, so that's the huge difference here in anything we've had, we've seen before. We've heard from, from Rich and others, that many items are end of life, you've seen that, you know, there's a certain point. It's not an issue of maintenance, it's not an issue that things have not been maintained properly. In fact, kudos to Steve and his group, they maintain things to the best level that's possible. In fact, many of the things fell off. If you looked at the old assessment that was done for the original project for the middle school, many of those projects no longer existed in our new evaluation, because our maintenance would have done some of those repairs. So, maintenance is being done, everyone needs to understand, maintenance is, is being deferred, because, and that's why we have to have a capital project. We have to have a capital project, because things at some point come to the end of their useful life, and no amount of maintenance can fix them. And it's that, you get to a point where you just have to replace them. The best way to do that is through a capital project. The best way to do that is through a capital project. I'll get to that in a second. And that's actually, now, go back. That's actually the third, but, the third, uh, go back one page. Emergency repairs are expensive. Yep? So the way you pay for a project, whether it be, you know, a new roof, whatever, we could actually theoretically pay for it through the operating budget. There's some problems with that. Number one, if, most projects that are paid through the operating budget are paid one hundred percent by the taxpayer. There's no, typically, it's very difficult, I'm trying to correct me if I'm wrong here, it's very difficult to get reimbursed by the state on, on most of those repairs that we use through the operating budget. So the actual cost to the taxpayer is one hundred percent versus if you do it through a capital project, the cost to the taxpayer, they start conservative estimate is fifty percent. So there's a huge savings if you do it through a capital project. The other issue is if we don't do it through a, through a capital project and unfortunately the referendum fails and a repair comes up and we have to now fund it through our existing operating budget, our operating budget is a set number, as you recall, just like this is a set number. So that money would have to come out of somewhere else. So if something comes up, we have to repair a roof and it costs a million dollars, well, that's going to have to come out of the operating budget, which means it's going to come out of the program and it's going to come out of the options for chid, for children. And that's the biggest worry we have moving forward because these buildings are in need of, there's, there's no other way to say it. Go ahead. I told you before that we brought in Colombo Group, they did another bottom-up assessment of the costs. So we feel very comfortable with the cost we're bringing to you. They would be our construction manager in this project. They would assess every single item that was going on and try to minimize the cost moving forward and make sure we're getting the biggest bang for the buck, if you want to call it that. Here's a big thing to take away, I think it's this slide, yes, we will not move a child during this project. Every child will stay in their classroom, in their schools. No child will be relocated, they won't be moved from the district. That was a concern in the last one, and that was a priority of the school board to make sure that that was factored into whatever assessment was done here. So it will be factored in swing space, which is basically constructing new. When the construction is completed, we will move the children to the new space and then renovate the older areas that they were in. So we've incorporated that. Most of our construction will be in summer months and weekends and nights to make sure that every child, you know, essentially would stay and there would be no disruption to their, to their school week. Okay? Excellent. And learn more. So again, we did it tonight. There'll be a new improved version. Every time I do this, I try to say something different. We'll have that on October twenty-second. And there's also, as you see there, a number of other presentations that are done for other people that may be better than mine, I hope, you know, on the sixth and the fourteenth and twenty-first. So get many opportunities to come out, learn more, ask questions. That's what this is for. An informed voter is, is a good voter. We want you to make sure that you feel comfortable before you go to polls, that you know exactly what's involved in this project so that you can make an informed decision when you go to vote. I think the next one is. Yes? So please remember that. So now we're going to open it up to questions. I'm not going to answer them all, but let's, I'll be back.
Thanks.
Brian has some questions.
Thank you, Nick. Nick and Mick has done a bunch of these. He does a great job, and we really appreciate that. So glad. I have a couple of questions that were sent in.
Yes, work, um, people might want to, or students.
Okay. So first question is, where will the kids be while construction goes? Mick just addressed that a little bit, but I'll expand on that a little bit. The, the capital project includes some new construction, some new classroom space. So the plan is that the, the new construction will be done first, and then as renovations happen in the older parts of the building, the children from most parts of the building will move to the new classroom space, the back of the structure, it's going on. Do I need to go back to that? Brian, can I?
Obviously, the middle school has the most work that needs to be done. And so there's a pretty extensive extension that's going on, roughly thirty-five, I think. And so that would be constructed for us to allow an empty space to be used while the other areas of the building are being addressed. And yeah, so I mean, that, as well as the high school, there's going to be, you know, five classrooms, but a lot of that construction will be scheduled either through the summer, you know, from this weekend. So that's, that's been coordinated with Colombo, and they, they're comfortable that there won't be a major disruption to any of the schools' construction analysis.
Excellent. Second question, why is there no mention of any green building standards? This would be an important selling point for the bond ownership. That's a great question. I wanted to talk about the lineups.
Yeah, I mean, again, coming back to the middle school, there's so much construction being done at the middle school that you, you're not going to be conforming, you're not going to be, you know, pre-existing non-conforming. You're going to have to conform to all the new building code requirements, including energy standards. So in addition to that, we're going to have a heavy emphasis on how we, the indoor air quality and how we manage HVAC throughout the buildings and the school district. Because, you know, we're going to, where ductwork, new ductwork is needed, we'll size it so that it's capable of handling air conditioning. We won't necessarily fit it up with air conditioning because, you know, I think it'll be a multiple-step process in that, you know, we'll evaluate with the new improved air movement and air exchanges in the, in the buildings to see if that will be adequate to resolve the issues with the, you know, over temperatures and inadequate circulation. So, so that'll be a iterative process, but again, you know, there'll be a heavy emphasis, I think, you know, by the school board as well, as a, a strong focus to make sure that we address, you know, energy efficiency opportunities in addition to, you know, high-efficiency air handlers, solar, solar installation, and, you know, any potential educational opportunities to.
There was my question, and I was concerned that the, the paper that went out to all households did not mention anything like about that. I think it's important to emphasize that for the public in some way.
The point is, we'll take it, and what was missed, I think, what was in this presentation that may not have been in that, that mattered, is that we are complying with New York State CHIPS, which is the highest level of high performance that we can, and that much of it is, is one-to-one with LEED. We don't have to do the extra expense of being LEED certified as long as we're CHIPS-certified in New York State. So there are similar standards. Some of them are exactly the same, but it is less expensive to go with the state standards, which includes LEED standards instead of going in that direction. So this, the board is committed to doing the New York State CHIPS program.
Thank you.
So now we're going to open the floor to questions from the public.
If you can come on down or if you can screen out, that's good with us too, but we'll give you a, a microphone if you want it.
Hi, I had a terrific tour. Thank you for setting that up. I am appreciating all of the details about what's probably the oldest school in the district, so that makes a lot of sense. Heavy list, lots of things that need to be changed. I am very surprised to see Lenape on the list, a new construction since I've lived here. And I'm wondering about what went wrong that we're already putting that in a big million-dollar plan that we can learn from, that we don't have this exact comment happening several years down the road for this particular type of project? Because I like a lot of what I'm hearing, but I'm a little nervous about that one piece.
Thanks, Steve.
Very good question.
Lenape, it is the newest building that we have in the district, that's correct. It's new, it's now twenty-one years old. The part of the project that we'll be doing here, one of the major components of that project is a building management system that Mike had spoken about previously for energy efficiency. So what we will have is the ability to, we have it displaced in some of Lenape already. We're going to flesh it out to the rest of the building so that we can control spaces via a computer network, raising them when they needed to be raised, lowering them when they don't need for occupancy and unoccupies, unoccupied times. There's a lot of energy management going into that contract. Those technologies weren't readily available twenty-one years ago, that are today. So we're improving upon for efficiencies. Another thing, another thing I'd like to, to add on the comment that you made before about the green energy and whatnot, separate from this project, so that, you know, we're applying right now, the governor has just pushed out a solar project that under superintendent racist direction, I've applied for the grant for that for. So we're on that list, the paperwork's filed, we're looking to become one of the districts that gets to take advantage of that. And that will also be going on Lenape. My intentions are the back field that is now used for a septic field, rather than compromise our roofs, and the roofs that we'll be putting on to build the solar array back there, that won't even be able to be seen, but will be able to utilize, locking in our energy prices moving forward and utilizing solar energy to fuel our district.
I'd also like to go back to the original question, and I'm going to take it from a programmatic standpoint, and Steve can tell you why this is happening. But right now, since last year, towards the middle of last year, the dividing door in the gymnasium is open and cannot be opened and closed. It's deliberately so that it can be opened and closed depending on which programs we're using in here. Now it can be used as two phys ed stations, but it's very difficult to work with a band with so many students that would normally be in there, as well as a lot of the presentations. Steve can tell you what's happened because the reason we need to have that open is programmatic. He can tell you what the issues are and why we need to fix it.
What had happened is the gym divider that separates both sides of the gym is twenty-one years old, and it's becoming fatigue. It shouldn't have worn out yet. There was a design miscalculation on the roof loading for the beams so that when there was extreme snow loads on the top of that roof, the steel beam would actually reflect, which caused excessive wear on the gym door prematurely, causing it to fail. So that is another part that's going to be corrected moving forward when the project passes, correcting the, the inadequacies of seasoned steel and also replacing that gym door, which is about a hundred thousand dollar item itself, so.
Which I think is precisely what you're concerned about. And that is what, I wanted to make sure we gave you that ex, that answer so that everyone at the table can speak to the fact that we're going to be ever vigilant for those things not to happen so we don't have to then go and spend another hundred thousand dollars that should not have had to been spent. Because they're committed to making sure that that hap, that we're doing the best that we can, which is why they're hiring a construction management firm to oversee all the contractors, subcontractors, and the architectural firms. It was a really good question. Stay right up.
I had everybody's point here before about the energy efficiency and the green efforts that you're going to have as this plan passes. I would just recommend that you get that message out beyond this meeting. So if there's a way that, I know you've sent the mailer out, but put it on the website, a special, you know, I think this message needs to be more widely distributed, this piece of this puzzle, so that people understand, you know, exactly how many efforts are being made and that this is a focus of this project. Just, just a suggestion.
Okay, so just for the benefit of the video tape, the comment was that the board should make an effort to publicize better the green energy efficiency steps that we're trying to pursue with this project.
I'm just wondering what the piece of validity is of adding another slide into this presentation? How it includes some of this great information? I was just, I'll share it to you.
I don't think we need a slide because we have Nick. It's already here, you know, online, and it's a little after. But what about people who don't come in here and don't get to hear it? It will be online. It, it is online, but what we could do. If there was an excellent. What we could do is to add a whole section online that speaks specifically to adding a finance section. We should add a whole green energy section and explain what New York CHIPS is, why we're doing that, and why we can't come out and tell specifically what we're doing because we're only in the conceptual stage. Once we get in the design stage, the commitment of the board. So what we need to do, how do you get it? Is to, we're going to add a section that will have that information. But to put it into this slideshow, I think, would be counterproductive at this time. We should just make sure that we're speaking to it and we have it online so people can access it for people that cannot be here.
And you can share it.
And you can share it and share links and things like that. So if you, yeah, maybe we could push out through our email system a link to this information so that people could share it with their, their, yeah, great idea. Keep going, you're honorable.
I would also suggest that you stress the nature of the code improvements that will have to be made as soon as you start to touch the building. I had no idea prior to seeing it today that anybody in a wheelchair or with physical challenges had to exit the building to get around to a ramp. And it may have given some of the information that I have been looking at, but it didn't leave out of it, and seeing it tonight made a big difference. The nurse's office, the fact that it's small, that two kids might be in there and not have privacy. I would stress that it's a HIPAA violation and that as soon as you touch the building, you're required to meet different standards. And I think I might stress some of what is standardized state or educational building code as must having to be done and why. I think that that's a little bit of a gray area in the nurse's office, in the ramp issue. I would, I would say that would be a really strong visual and selling point if you stressed it a little clearer.
I wanted, I wanted to elaborate a little bit more on.
Could you repeat a little of what she said just so that.
Oh, sure.
Because unless we give you this, it's going to be very garbled on the video.
So the question had to do with, or the comment had to do with highlighting some of the code improvements in terms of AD. ADA as well as.
HIPAA.
Some of those things should be highlighted and emphasized as topics that are categories that will be improved at the middle school and probably elsewhere.
Why don't you try to, why don't you open up the code? Because the code, once you open, it's now going to take us to code.
Right, I guess once you begin a project, you're then responsible for addressing those, those required code improvements. Just to dovetail a little bit on the, the green building comments, and I brought this up as a suggestion at this table before, I think a very easy thing for us to do, and I'm going to volunteer Mike Demitrovitz to, to figure this out. We have all these, these items that we're, we're addressing across the different schools, and there definitely is no very expensive project that's, that's green along the lines of a ground source heat pump or like a big solar array, but there are many green improvements that are taking place as part of this project. New doors, new windows, upgraded insulation, ventilation. So I think identifying that list and itemizing it as part of this, this green slide that Ruth suggested we add would be a very good addition to, to the, to the presentation.
Daddy, I wrote a down for you. Thank you, Jim.
Do you want to take the microphone?
Yeah. Do you want to make a microphone? Anybody wants to convince me to use the microphone?
I know from watching the legislative sessions online, if you're not on the mic and people at home can't hear the question, that's right. I have some financial questions, but if you're doing a financial session tomorrow, I may wait till then because there's, there may not be time tonight. With all the, talking about water and things and with our town hall being of similar vintage and having similar, you know, maybe not as obvious a problem, has there been an old inspection done with all of this?
Go ahead, Steve, you can play.
In which, this specific building here?
In all of the buildings.
Well, we do test in all the buildings. I didn't know if your question was about this building. We do test on demand. We have systematic tests that we provide for this building site because of the building envelope issues that we have with moisture entering the building. We have a program that we test periodically for mold with, throughout the building, random sections. We actually have, had some teachers on Dr. Weisenthal's staff wear a mobile monitor so that they could do random samples as they walk through the buildings. Another test that we perform quite frequently.
Another test that we perform quite frequently is for VOCs, volatile organic compounds. So to see...
I don't even know what that is.
It's the same smell that you smell perfume and gasoline, it's what gives the scent to is a volatile organic. Some of them are good, some of them not so good. So we do a ripcord spectrum test of that for 50 different volatile organic compounds, to see where we stand on the spectrum against, test outside for the same atmosphere.
As well as air quality testing?
Air quality testing.
On a noise basis, different areas. It's extremely important, because these are our children we're talking about. So we wanna make sure that they're at least in a safe building, if not with fresh air handling coming in. We wanna make sure there's no mold, and that the air quality meets standard, we want nothing toxic. And if I wanted to put my children or grandchildren in a building, I'd wanna make sure that it was safe. That's how I feel about everyone else's. So Steve has different protocols set up. We bring in Dr. Aror from Bosse's, who's the safety coordinator, to conduct these. We're not even doing them ourselves, we're making sure there's an objective outside lab setting. And it may be an added expense, but it's one that we feel is absolutely necessary in all buildings. And I date myself that 40 years ago, I actually taught in this building, in my brief teaching career. And those ramps were here back then, and were problematic 40 years ago. How are we gonna fix them? I don't, I, I'm not clear on where you're gonna need the space to fix those ramps.
Go ahead, Rick can explain that.
The basic plan is to actually remove the ramps, make it level, and put in effect a small little elevator in the corner for students to have to change levels.
How did you project what the enrollment? How did you project what the enrollment will be over the next 20 years? Whether the population will be increasing or decreasing?
We actually have two sources. What I've been doing enrollment projections for about 12, 13 years since I've been here. We also have an outset company that does enrollment projections for us independently. They're both pre-coordinated. They've been pretty good predictors of these for the last 13 years, and pretty much, our population has been fairly level. Occasionally, there are certain years that will go up by 50 or 100, certain years that will down by 50 or 100. But it's been fairly level since I've been here in 2001.
That's a good question.
I have a follow-up to that, yeah.
Please. Thank you for doing that.
I'm just curious, the number of students kindergarten is like 2008 versus 2014? Do you know what those numbers are yet?
I don't have the memory right now, but I have it in my office, I can send it to you.
When you said that their populations, the number of students is going up 10%, right?
Actually, it's been quite varying. I've seen kindergarten classes of like 140, and I've seen kindergarten classes of near 200, and it goes back and forth. It doesn't, it's not a constant number, it literally bounces around.
But overall, page 12, what we've seen through at least the past four years, is an increase of about 50 students pretending as students.
And the square footage, I didn't see how much the square footage of this building would increase with this new plan?
Good question.
What percentage of square footage would increase?
The additions in the high school, there are six classrooms, addition of about 10,000 square feet. In this building, the addition would be about 33,000 square feet. Currently, this building is 90, 95,000 somewhere in that range of square feet, so it'd be adding about 33,000 to the minutes.
And just one more, and that is, the last time, the last question I had was with the technology. I don't understand why something that might be obsolete, and you're saying it's a network, but I don't see a standard, like the type of network, it's very general.
It is general for purpose, because we haven't, we're in the conceptual design spot, but the bottom line is what we need to have is wireless capacity throughout the district. And what we're trying to do is to be able to be prepared, so that we can access and provide our students with the online testing that's being mandated by the state of New York, and they have specs of what we have to be able to do. So what we wanna do is to make sure we have the capacity in our infrastructure to be able to eventually move forward in that. And we also want, the research will be done once they start doing the design, after, if this project is approved, then the architects will design the actual infrastructure that we wanna make sure can move forward, and not be obsolete within the same six months.
And just one last thing, and I'd just like to say those board of members, any of you that are not there, or that are not in line with the common core, and you've always been here to say, I'm with you, so. I'll just tell you that 100% I'm with you.
So to piggyback on that, you're confident that size issues are not gonna be a problem?
So are you overestimating a little bit for size, in case the, once people move in, or I'm just not clear on how we're going to, if we're so overcrowded now, how are we really gonna make enough space?
An example is what is being planned for the high school is actually what was come out of the original plan when they had to cut it, because the cost of steel went up, and they had to cut the project. So the need didn't go away, we still have over 700, and when my grandson, when my son graduated, he was over 800 kids, I mean, around that. So it does fluctuate, but we've had to cut back on some programs, because we don't have the physical space to be able to do them. So it's just the same four classrooms that were cut out. Actually, I think we cut six, we're only proposing four?
No, we cut, in the original 2003 project, we cut out five, this project has six.
Six in them, because of the kinds of programming.
And you're not enough, doesn't seem like that would be enough.
I think that it'll, that and the guidance area and relocation, which will eventually give us some conference rooms, I believe that we'll be able to do that. We're also looking at the future too, blended classroom, blended learning and some things like that. So we think that this will be able to accommodate what we're trying to do. We have some courses where children are out, and the high school students are more out into the community, doing internships and working on things like that. So we took program issues into consideration also.
Just that when we were on the tour, the kids were telling us how crowded these rooms are. So it's really, like, I mean, how are we addressing it? I don't really, I'm not even hearing it.
Okay. The plan is to add new space here, and to reconfigure it, so the actually rooms are going to accommodate more students, because they're up to a larger code. If you looked at the sizes of the rooms, they varied significantly. And the new space, did you wanna get into the details of the new space?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the six concentration for the high school, that's about 10,000.
It's probably like four rooms, and I'm like, horrible.
No, no, no.
In this building, ready, 33,000 to basically 90,000 square feet.
Over three times with the high school.
I got it.
Sorry, I have...
It's okay, it's okay.
I have a few things. First of all, I was just curious, if this law passes, you know, 52. whatever million dollars. I know that different people have different ways of spending money. How is there gonna be checks and balances on how money is gonna, like, everything is gonna be paid, and we're gonna get every penny out of every penny? Yeah, because I know that there can be waste, and unfortunately, and I'm not saying in this district, but just everywhere, there's corruption, and it just, like, that's a concern. I know I can go on a household on just about anything, I've done it. But I know other people that make three times as much as I did, and they can't even get by. So, you know, how is there gonna be checks and balances with the monies that's gonna be available?
Okay, so the checking balance of this project is gonna be the board group, there are the construction management firm that we fired, they will oversee, there are another set of eyes for us. They will oversee the architects, they will oversee the contractors, the subcontractors, everything. There will also be what's called a change order board, you wanna explain that a little bit?
We hope that everything is designed so well, that we don't have to make any changes to our plans. But that doesn't always happen, because sometimes you can't get materials for whatever the reason, or the cost of something goes up and something else might go down. There is a board policy on what can be approved at the lower level, and what needs to go through what we call is a change order board. And that change order board is comprised of our facilities community members. Jacob Lawrence is out there, he's one of them. The other one would be Michael. And we have another, do we have another one? We have another spot open, but it's defined. They would be the ones to sit down and meet with our architects, and our construction management firm, and to review the documentation and the reasoning for it before it's approved to go in that direction. So we have a, though the board members are your community representatives, there are also people from the community who have experience in facilities and operations. That's the only way they could have gotten out to our facilities committee. And their community members providing another layer of oversight. Prior to the board approving or disapproving the proposed change orders that have been vetted by Michael and Jacob and the unknown person.
Okay, so now, this group that the construction management, they're pretty transparent, everybody here is confident that everything is good, and, you know, transparent. I'm not trying to say anything bad, it's just, I only, when you talk about a lot of money, we need a lot of work done in these schools for the kids, really needs to be done. But if you got a big chunk of money, and somebody's doing something wrong, you're gonna lose important monies, you know, and just, you know, that's a concern. It'd just be nice, I think, to be reassured, to reassure the taxpayers, that their money is being safely spent on the projects. So, you know, put a lot of trust in you guys, I guess. Let's see, at the last meeting, there was like the high school, there was a question that came up, and I don't know if it ever got answered right, or clearly. There was the New York State reimbursement, how does that work? Where does that money get reimbursed back to? Does it get invested back into the project on top of the 52.9 million dollars?
No, what it is, is we, every year, get various kinds of state aid from the state, state aid for transportation, state aid for hardware, for textbooks, and just basic state aid. There's a specific type of state aid called building aid. You only get it if you're doing an actual building project. And so what they do is they give you a certain percentage of the cost of the project back in building aid. So we will get that every year over 15 to 20 years. They'll actually, at the end, come up with like an assumed amortization schedule, which means, they basically assume, they're gonna make their payments like you would a mortgage, so much every year, the same amount every year. And we will get that in building aid, and we will use that building aid to offset the cost of, not the total cost, but part of the cost to the bond. That building aid paying off for the bond is why the tax increase will only come up to 1% in 2015, 16, as well as returning debt and other things. But that is a major chunk of it.
One more thing about the state aid, actually, as you know, we're gonna pay low interest on those bonds. But our aid is not just on the principal, it's also on the percentage that we pay in interest. So that, and that money goes directly into, like you said, paying off our bond.
And two more, two more things. Last one too, there was a high school student that stood up and made a really good suggestion, said, you know, maybe you could have assemblies, and I think only at the high school level, because the kids are more mature there. Have some assemblies with information on this project, so that these kids, when you look, we got that, what, 30 people here tonight? How many voters have we had? I know you have a lot of meetings coming up, there's a lot of people not coming out for whatever reason. And the high schoolers are old enough to understand some of this stuff, they've been through this. Has there been any additional funding to like talk about?
Well, we're on, they're on, it's all happening. The students went back, they started having debates and conversations, because you saw how many were here. They talked to their teachers, the teachers talked to the principal, the principal contacted me. They decided, instead of just doing it to participation in government classes, they thought that it should, there should be an assembly for all seniors, because seniors have this, they have to understand what's happening. And many seniors, maybe, I don't think from the beginning of the year, but when it comes to voting for the budget, they're turning 18. And they have, they are talking about what their responsibilities are as citizens, and as people who live in our community. So they have, they are planning everything. We have to do is to, when they tell us who they want there, they've already told me, they told Barbara and Mrs. Clinton. And they'll just tell us who they want there, and we'll show up, and we will do, you know, what they're asking for us to do. But the fact is, they started debates and conversations, and they self-organized, to me. That means we're being successful in how we're working with our children.
I remember, kudos to this kid, thank you for mentioning it.
Thank you. And last one, I just wanna make a comment about the, talking about doing the networking at computer, because there's gonna, there's New York State online stuff that's gonna be mandated. There are a good amount of homes that cannot afford computers at home. I know people, I have friends of mine whose kids, they have required in classrooms, they have to go online every night or whatever, there are more. They can't. They go to the library, they stand in line, or don't even get a chance to go on, and their grades are hurting because of this. And I feel so bad, I offer it to friends of mine, they can come to my house anytime, you know, but they don't, because they're shy, or whatever. And I just, you know, that's just a comment, I, you know, computers, yeah, they're very common, but they're still not affordable to everybody yet, you know? So there are households out there that are missing out, the students are really...
And it does, thank you. And that's part of one of the things that we're investigating, is in many schools, they're giving devices to students for that reason. But then I have another concern, if they don't have a computer, do they have access to the internet at home? So there's a whole bunch of things that we're researching right now, how can we take care of that? Do we need to open up our library media centers where the computers might be after school for a long period of time, so that those students have access to it? So I appreciate you bringing it to the table, because it's a real concern in the districts too.
My girlfriend, one girlfriend in particular, she brings her daughter to the library, so I suggest we really try it. And when they go to the library, she's, you know, they're waiting on one computer, and people that are there, I mean, they have every right to be there too, but they're just kind of circling the left, you know, and you can't go over and say, get off. So, but that's just, that's a whole other issue. Thank you, thank you.
Hi, just have a couple of questions. What is, how long is the project gonna take?
We're hoping that some very small parts of it may happen as early as this summer,
but realistically, most of it will happen in 2016, 17, and 18, and should be completed by beginning of school year, September 2018.
Have you written in the possibility of inflationary expenses into this? I know that's tomorrow night's discussion.
No, no, and the budget that both the architects came up with, and the construction managers, they put in an escalation for that.
I taught school for 31 years in Rogers, and the building that I was in, they were expanding and putting on a new wing, and they promised that over the summertime, most of the construction will be done. And of course, it was September, October, November, December is when they started it. So I'm assuming that you have some sort of guarantees that this is definitely gonna be worked on during the summertime, because I can assure you that it is extremely disruptive to have construction jackhammers going on, pile drivers, and whatever else they use to the classroom teacher, it's a big problem.
Not all the work will be done in the summer, and I don't want people to think that that's what's gonna happen.
I know, I do.
We did say to the, our construction management firm, and we haven't gone out and finalized any contracts to put certain provisos in yet, but we are taking what you're saying seriously. I do not want everyone to think that there's gonna be nothing happening during the school day in some of these buildings, because that's probably not true. But they did, we are going to be presenting it, so that the majority of that kind of work, the actual construction and that kind of thing, we're hoping will be done during the summer, over vacations, in the evening, which means we had to build in that kind of cost. So, but I agree with you. I've lived through it as a teacher, as a principal, and as a superintendent in more than one district. And it is upsetting, and it does distract from the instructional process. So we're gonna try to minimize that, but it will not be extinguished during the school day.
Yeah, you have the same construction companies that are working with all these different districts, and a lot of... districts and a lot of times they're like promises, but it doesn't always hold true. Thank you.
On that, will there be penalties?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question. In, I was here in 2003 and we added on to the high school, which is quite a sizable issue. And they did do quite a bit of work during the school year, but anything that was loud, we had them do outside of student hours. They could do work that wasn't loud. And since most of the construction was basically out in the area that there wasn't, there weren't any classrooms, we were able to minimize the, how loud it was during student time quite a bit. Major things, they did do during the summer, but they did do construction during the school year, but we minimized the sound and we basically told them between each hour, and it was in the pit documents, and in fact, you have to keep it below a certain threshold. We can put that in the pit documents and if they don't comply, I authorize all payments. They don't pay, I don't pay them.
Thank you. I was just going to ask if there were any penalties or incentives built into that. When we get to that phase, if it passes, we'll get to that phase.
Anybody else? Thank you all very much for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve, Townhead, and Mike D'Amico, Mike D'Amico.